Let us once again remain standing and think about our servicemen and women serving our country around the world. Thank you, you may have a seat. Welcome to the Village Board of Trustees Workshop Meeting, oh, excuse me, meeting, Board Meeting, Monday, July 1st, 7:00 PM. Oh, you need the, uh, standby. It looks like we have a full house. Not yet. The Village Workshop Meeting will not be held in July. The regular meeting of the Board of Trustees will be August 5th at 7:00 PM. At 7:05, I'd like to open up the public hearing to consider a local law to provide for additional handicap parking spaces in the central business district, establishing no loading zone in the central business district, and to establish limits on idling vehicles in the central business Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak? Mr. Magrino?
Uh, yes, good evening, Mayor and Board. This is an item I know that Ms. Paffenroth was working on. There's some concerns with the parking, uh, and especially with respect to idling vehicles. Um, I did a little research on it. The county does have an idling law, um, but, and I believe, uh, you know, I was just chatting with the chief briefly, um, it's, it is a little difficult to enforce because of three minutes and things of that nature, but I did provide, uh, I believe to Amy, there's an opinion from the Attorney General's Office that if we do want to enforce this type of thing on a state road, which Lafayette is, or parts of it, and as well as Orange, uh, we'd probably have to get written approval from the DOT. So my intention would be, yeah, this is more, I guess, just to kind of start the conversation, see what the Board thinks, um, is after tonight, uh, speak with Charles and the chief, uh, about, you know, touching base with DOT on that and seeing if it's something that, you know, they'd be okay with us, you know, enforcing something like that. I don't think it'll be an issue, but it is something we'd have to look into.
Do we know the exact time of the idling, uh, law?
I believe the county's idling law is three minutes.
Oh, it is three?
Yeah, I've seen some other municipalities where it's five.
And we don't know if the county, right, we would have to adopt a, adopt a similar local law as the county with the approval from the DOT within the Village of Suffering.
That's right, for enforcement on the state roads, which obviously, that mafia would be, um, yeah, and in terms of, um, the one change that I would make to the proposed law, and this was just, again, out for conversation, um, is about the issue about Department of Health, again, if you're going to charge it under a village code, that would just be a village code violation, the Department of Health issue that we'd, we'd put with the county if you charged them under the county, but those are some issues we need to, to straighten out, and then Mayor and I were also speaking about some other issues about maybe a more comprehensive look at parking in the downtown especially.
Yeah, I also had that discussion with Chief Osborne, if he wanted to add to it, Chief, in regards to the parking conditions overall in the CB.
The Mayor and I spoke several times, and the latest was this morning. I think one of the things going on here in the village, we've had some buildings, some other buildings going up, we just have a lot more traffic. You look at like the Beal, I'll give an example, across from the post office, the amount of cars in a daily basis, it's now pretty much full. We used to be pretty much half-empty all the time. I do think with all the requests we're getting, the building in the downtown, surrounding the downtown, the Mayor and I talked about maybe a comprehensive parking study by someone like an engineering firm, we've used, um, John Langsfer before in regards to where you put speed bumps in, stop signs, we'll do a whole assessment of the area to make sure we're following every protocol that we need to. I think the parking is becoming to the point where we're getting requests every month and it, there really isn't, I don't think, a ton of parking left at this point with the amount of people coming in. So I did suggest to the Mayor, we, we talked about it, maybe any comprehensive plan, just so we can get a plan of what we need to do in the future, instead of a knee-jerk if a building comes in and say, "Well, can I take 20 spots there?" We really should probably have more of a plan. I just, we're getting to that point where it really wasn't in the past, I think it is now.
I think we have to analyze it within the plan, right? The analyze the parking overall, the signage.
Correct.
The appropriate number of 15-minute spots, the loading zones, the handicaps, right? That's, as we were discussing, I just want to make the Board aware of that. I think that really is something that we should look at and consider.
Totally agree. Up there really, Mayor, in the past, it probably said we could probably do it ourselves, but it's gotten that involved, it's just too much, there's too many things going on around us at this point, I think, and in a good way, more coming in.
Right, and that's also what West Point did recommend in their study.
Yeah.
When they did the, when they did the parking study.
Right, alright.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Oh, Mike would like to speak? Come on up. Please state your name and address.
Yes, Michael Norris Cissok, One Memorial Drive, owner of Mia's Kitchen, and, um, you know, I was recently expressing some concern about, uh, I guess, the parking slash, you know, traffic concept of Suffering, and, uh, just to piggyback off of what Clark said, that, uh, it's just, you know, we've been here five years now, and it seems so much more crazy and congested, and it's just like, it really, it's a lot. And I noticed that a lot of merchants, uh, not the merchants, but the consumers that come to Suffering, who'll ask me, they'll be like, "Well, where do I park? What do I do? What are the hours?" It just seems to be like, not necessarily a lack of communication, but a lot of people seem to not really know. And we're talking about people coming from Ramsey and Mawa and Tuxedo Park and Montebell, they're often confused on how the parking sort of breaks down. And then, I guess it was maybe six months, a year ago, when we made the changes, or you guys made the changes, to a lot of 15-minute spots, that, um, a lot of people were questioning that as well, you know, and, um, and I kind of explained to them, just to enable merchants to have more of a rotation of customers and allowing people to get in and out. But fast forward until now, you know, like, I can only speak for myself as like a food service merchant, that, like, trying to create a little ambiance, you know, we, we pay for the tables and we have that out there, but people don't want to sit out there when people idle in their cars. They don't want to sit out there when the trucks are blocking everything, you know, and I can only speak for our building, but there's a million deliveries and we're not even getting them. But they're blocking our building and our customers want to sit outside, but then again, they don't, and we're unfortunately a small place, so it kind of hurts us a little bit, but more than just us, I'm more concerned about the customers that want to come to Suffering and maybe, or maybe, not necessarily leave with a bad taste in their mouth, but it just isn't what they expected by, you know, the deliveries and the confusion, the parking and things like that, so, you know, I'm just here requesting that maybe the signage maybe can be a little bit more, uh, clear, you know, like, maybe no deliveries in certain spots, or maybe no idling in other spots, you know, some are 15, some are two. What time are people out to park in the 15-minute for longer? After four, is it after five, you know? And then, you know, one other thing, hats off, I have to give hats off to, I don't know his last name, I forget, Tom, who moved over to Dispatch. You know, it was interesting, when Tom came on, he started creating momentum, and a lot of the drivers, they would kind of know what the parameters were, and now that he moves over, that seems to be lost, because the drivers that, not, not necessarily would just park in, in front of Mia's for someone else down the street, they'll park in the road, like, in the road, you know what I'm saying? Now that Tom's gone, you'll start to see some of those bad habits from maybe some of the local delivery guys, it's the same guys, it's generally the same people all the time, so, you know, I know that, you know, you know, the Suffering PD does a great job in enforcement, but it's almost like, almost to some degree, a challenge, because like we just said about the population and maybe the, the unclarity of the signage, maybe to those sort of extents, so I'm just asking the Board to maybe consider, maybe adjust in some of the signage and, you know, making it clearer for people.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know when you, if you heard, what we, we plan on doing is potentially getting someone in to do a, a complete parking study, and then to realize where, where the sign should, where the sign should be, how it should be pointed, if there should be timeframes, your 15 minutes, so that's...
And it's a challenge too, because I, I get it, that the merchants need deliveries, and we're not really, there's not a lot of places for these big trucks to deliver, or then if they can't get out of the side street, and then next thing you know, they're blocking traffic and potential safety issues as well, so I don't really know how to fix that, you know, like, but for example, we get all our deliveries behind our building, you know, and it seems to work with the long tractor trailer, so I don't, I don't really know if it's fair for the consumers that come to the Village of Suffering that can't consume or shop because they're blocked by a million trucks, and, you know, you, Mayor, you've seen it, I pointed out to you, he comes to our shop once in a while, but, so there's that congestion issue that I guess we're starting to be facing, and I say "we" because it's all of us, you know, so...
Well, we, you know, we've heard it from numerous merchants, and we recognize it ourselves, so this is what we're, we're challenged with, and we're going to undertake most likely a parking study to see what, what we can do, how we can best work for all.
I appreciate it, whatever you guys can do, and your consideration is great.
I have a quick, quick question. So you mentioned that a lot of times people don't want to sit outside your restaurant because of these trucks coming and going, and it's kind of...
Well, they'll generally park there and idle.
So my question, yes, so my question would be twofold. Number one, what time of day is this happening where people are not interested in sitting outside?
Yeah, you know, and it's interesting, because, you know, sitting in that window for the last six years, including our build-out, you're, I just see so much stuff, but as far as a time range, Suffering is all about nine to five, Monday through Friday. It just is, you know?
Like, is your restaurant open later than that, or are you...
No, not really, and at that time of day, all the deliveries are done, parking, there's, like, right now, there's plenty of spots available. It's usually around that peak time, at lunchtime, you know?
I see, okay, I was just trying to get a sense if there's a particular time of day...
Yeah, it's usually like that peak from like ten to four.
And I don't, I don't know what the Board feels, but I'm just throwing it out there, maybe, maybe there's a reason or, or a thought that we should at least consider reducing delivery times to certain intervals. I, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, and again, that's a challenge, especially certain times of year, on like Fridays, when like Eminem and a liquor store and et cetera, they're just getting so much volume for the weekends, because these distributors don't deliver on the weekends too, so it's, again, we're kind of concentrated seven days into five days in the Village of Suffering, because our hustle and bustle is mostly through Monday through Friday, you know, so, from a merchant standpoint at least, you know, so, thank you for your consideration, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Board, Bruce Simon, 31 Utopian Avenue. Just as you're mentioning traffic studies, several have been done over the years. The answers to the questions you have might actually exist. Paperwork should be somewhere in the Clerk's office.
In regards to parking?
Yes.
Oh, really?
Yes. Several studies have been done over the years about the number of spots, where they should be, how long they should be, all that information might already exist, there might not be a need to spend any money on this.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
That's great news. Thank you, Bruce, great news.
Is there anyone else that would like to?
So, I, you know, I don't know if you want to continue this, or, uh, we could renotice it if you want to do it, I really was to get a feel from the public and the Board, what, how we want to...
I think it should be renotice, and, you know, as Bruce mentioned, that there may be information that will be available to us. I haven't seen it, but we can, we can look into it, but, um...
So maybe you'd close the public hearing tonight, then, if you want to re, you know, do it again, you would...
Then we'll renotice it.
Okay.
Board? Sounds good, yeah. Well, because of the idling piece?
Yeah, because of overlapping the seven to five and the seven-ten, I don't know if you want to make that decision for both, or here or there.
Well, I think we have to open up the second hearing anyway. So let's, let's, let's close the public comment, the public hearing. Motion to close the public hearing for Lafayette Avenue Vehicle and Traffic.
Motion.
Motion, Trustee Albert, second.
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Next, uh, public hearing, seven-ten Chestnut Street and Orange Avenue Parking, public hearing to consider local law, to consider additional parking on the corner of Chestnut Street and Orange Avenue. Have a motion, open the public hearing?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Hold on now. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak in regards to parking, additional parking, the corner of Chestnut and Orange?
Did you want me to?
Yeah.
Sure.
Right, this is again, uh, Amy had put this together, the first part was, uh, you know, with the new, uh, the Sheldon going up, this was changing some of the parking on Orange Avenue, um, I believe eighty-three feet from the corner of Bloavelt Way. I just walked by there, I think, is that what's in effect now?
No.
Okay, so that's, that's one more up, right, okay, okay, I wasn't sure, I didn't take out a tape measure, so, um, so, you know, that's something to consider, um, and then some of the handicap, again, I don't know, again, this is something you want to wait until you do a study, you want to proceed on this, this might be a little more...
Well, going to this, going to this piece of the parking is that, I personally think that Orange Avenue should have that additional parking with the additional clearances at the eighty-three feet north of Bloavelt Way. The only exception I have would be not to 114 Wayne, uh, Orange Avenue, I think it has to be a little bit more specific to the exit from the Sheldon onto Orange Avenue, as we spoke of in the...
Where the fire hydrant is.
So we have the clearance to the fire hydrant, but we don't have, I think we need to take one spot out of the southbound side, I guess? Looking to the left.
Oh, looking to the left.
Yeah, so when you're coming out of the Sheldon onto Orange, if you, if you look to the left, we should take that one parking spot, so we have a wider, um, line of sight both ways.
Yeah, you know, that came up at, uh, site plan review, so I, I think I, I mentioned that, we'll have to take a look and make sure, that was one of the recommendations, actually, where they would also put the stop...
Right.
For that, because obviously people who want to make it either way, um, it's concerning, so, uh, we'll look at the site plan on that. Um, and in terms of this, again, I'd also, not as urgent, but we should maybe speak to State DOT about some of this, so my recommendation would be maybe if we put it on for, if you want to proceed on this, is to put it off for September, and then in the interim, we can...
We'll have to renotice this also, then?
Well, we can continue it to September if you wish. It's up to you, we can...
But how we go about the parking that's already there? Someone went out and striped the street.
Yeah, well, that was probably in violation of the site plan, so we speak to the Building Department about that. I don't know who striped it.
I'm, uh, here, here, we're glad you're here. That one spot, before we go any farther, we can just get that one spot removed? That's like an immediate, I think, safety factor, we should really get rid of immediately, which is the extra spot on Orange, and you and I know, looked at the exit out on, onto Orange, but at the corner of Chestnut and Orange, if we can get that spot, if we can somehow do this immediately, just for safety purpose, I think we probably should.
In addition to having the three-hour parking?
Absolutely.
I think, I think we should adopt that.
Well, that's fine, I'm just more concerned about that extra spot. We had this one spot that's available, that's, was taken away, the second spot, I believe, now, right, was taken away for some of the pedestrians, so it's, it looks like it's a spot again.
So it's eighty-three feet, the, the, from, from Bloavelt Way, the eighty-three feet north?
Past the second spot, eighty-three.
That's right, so those two spots are gone, and then further up north, that last spot before the driveway will remove?
Yes, and we should really assess that to immediately, because there is a million, watch that for next month, and see what we do. Should we do that too?
So should we just implement that now?
No, you have to do it, you have to, this was just the initial discussion.
Okay.
So I think you should continue it for...
Alright, so we'll continue to put the public hearing until we get further feedback from DOT, but at the same time, we'll block out those, that last spot, those, the three spots in total.
Maybe you just authorize circulation, pursue to SECR, we'll do that.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
Authorize circulation for SECR and to State DOT.
Mm-hmm, okay.
As part of the vote to continue. So, I just want to be clear, we, we're going to take the spots out while we pursue what we need to do with the DOT.
Correct.
We're not going to leave them in.
Right.
Okay, I like, I like that, I know, it's just safer.
Good, good, okay. Alright, so we'll continue to, a public hearing to 7:05 on August 5th. Um, so motion to close public hearing.
Motion.
Second?
Motion to continue.
Continue, sorry, motion to continue the public hearing. Motion by Paul, second by who?
Steve.
Steve? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Fire Department update, Chief Lepore.
Good evening. Uh, just have the one item, the resolution for the mutual aid agreement with Allendale.
Okay, so at this time, we need further information that is required, and we're going to, um, get that information to Ralph.
I, I received information today from the Deputy Chief, but what I now need to do is to work up an agreement between, uh, Allendale and, and Suffering, and then we can move forward, uh, with, with a view towards getting that done at the next meeting.
Okay, alright.
Alright.
That's all I got.
Alright, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mike?
Keep your good work.
One question. The alarms that go off at seven o'clock, their purpose is...
They test the, uh, test the fire alarms, um, it's pretty much everybody in the county, they test the fire...
Just at seven o'clock?
Yeah, forty-four control tested at seven o'clock on Mondays.
Do we do any other daily?
No.
No?
No.
Nothing?
And a lot of times, it doesn't go off at seven o'clock if somebody else has a fire on here. Like, if somebody else is out with a call at that time, they don't, they don't do the test. They only do it when, when there's nobody else has a call going on.
So it's only one test daily, otherwise it's an alarm?
That's it, yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Village Board. So a few things that we have for us, uh, the pool opened Saturday, June 29th, full house, or full outhouse, it was, oh, I shouldn't say that. Full, full house of the pool, it was a great day, and the concession stand, as we all know, opened up on Saturday. Great day, the guards were all excited to be back, uh, we have two new people at the concession stand, they did a great job on Saturday and Sunday and today, so we're really, really vamping up for the summer. We've got a lot of great feedback from the people that have been there so far, um, I'll go down further in my line and tell you about the numbers of people that we have registered at the pool, Moira, I'm sorry I didn't get back to you with the numbers, but I do have that tonight. It's been a great start for the season, so we're really looking forward to a great 2019, the weather's been cooperating with us, so thank you for those that came to the meet and greet, it was good to see everyone on Saturday, um, but again, it's going to be a great year, and we're really looking forward to it. Uh, the calendars, just to follow up from the workshop, the calendars went to print, we have them here at Village Hall, Connor School got them, we have them all over the Village for people to get them. Uh, the dollar amount, I think I sent an email out about the dollar amount that was to print, that was a question, um, at the last workshop. Uh, we've had three pool registration dates, we have one that just finished now at seven o'clock this evening, we have one this Friday, July 5th, and then due to people calling and saying they haven't been able to get in, and they won't be able to get in on Friday, we will schedule another one, we're just trying to see the consensus of timing that's best for the majority of people. So that happens every year, there's people that just can't get in during the registration dates, and we make a point to try to get a day that works for most, and then what we'll do is during the week, uh, when Nancy and/or I are up there, we take people in to, to do registration. It's not easy to do that, because we have to shut everything down if they need a photo, so we're, try to condense it as much as possible, so, um, I'll give you, I'll give you the amount of people that we've signed up so far. As of before tonight, we have adults, we have a hundred and eight people that are adults that have signed up for the pool. For children, this is ages five to sixteen, we have a hundred and ninety-five children that signed up for the pool, and then for seniors, we have a hundred and seventy-three people that are seniors that have signed up for the pool. Uh, so we've been very busy, so that, that's within three dates, those numbers are reflecting. Uh, swim registration was on Wednesday of last week, we, I don't want to say sold out, we filled up all the classes in the evenings, except for three slots in the Kinder Swim section, so we have three slots open in the evenings, so that, that booked out at night. Then in the daytime session, we have two sessions, the first one started this morning. We have a couple of openings in each session, session two is not filled up yet, but people typically wait until, they sometimes take the first session and then take the second session as well, for people that want to be at the pool and take more lessons, so the numbers are very comparable to last year, but the first night sell, selling out or filling up, evening was a great, was a great success, so, um, I would like to thank one of our rec board members, Denise, who's here, she helped out our, um, Andrea and Elaine and Nancy and I. Denise, thank you so very much for helping us. As some of you have been up to see, it's extremely busy when the first couple of days that we had registration, because again, we used to span it out a little bit more, so it was really efficient, it went very, very well. We're asking everybody for two forms of ID, that's having some people go and come back to make sure they have their ID, but it's very thorough and it's going extremely well, so Recreation Staff is doing phenomenal up there with that.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Denise.
Thank you. Yeah, it was a big, huge help to have that.
Kathy, your, your enrollments in the swim instruction, is it still mainly, um, kids that, whose families have pool memberships?
Yes, that was...
Or do you have more, um, enrollment from just the residents that don't participate in the pool membership?
We haven't had one family that says they want to do lessons and aren't signing up for the pool. We do still have two registration dates, though, so if and when, when we finish registration, I'll look back on the list, see if there's any kids that signed up for swim, but not for the pool, and we could take it from there, but everybody that has signed up for swim lessons has indicated they either have or will sign up for the pool, so we don't have anyone signing up just for, just for swim alone, um, but to...
So maybe we should be sending out some more constant contacts out to the residents to make sure they're aware, because it had been prior that you had to be a member of the pool, just so that they clearly understand that they do have the ability to send their kids in for a lesson.
Right. We are getting calls, people that are non-residents want to sign up, but we're still staying with just residents signing up for the swim, um, and to, up to one more additional. We did start, um, we had registration for lap swim for adults and for water aerobics for adults. We had one person sign up, she called today and she canceled, so right now, we don't have anybody in the evening, um, adult classes, so that's, that's the update on that as well.
Okay.
Uh, so the next thing I have on my list, uh, Family, uh, Taste of Suffering is next Tuesday, July 9th, that's with the Lions Club, Frank, we're looking forward to having you guys over there next Tuesday. Uh, Family Day at the Pool is July 14th, it's a Sunday. Clifford Theater begins a week from today, so after tonight's meeting, sometime this week, I should say, the dais typically comes down and Clifford takes over the auditorium. So we have three shows, three dates this year, four shows, uh, because of the huge crowd of kids that signed up, we now have a show on Thursday, August 1st, Friday, August 2nd, and then Saturday, August 3rd, we have two shows on that day, so we're really looking forward to Clifford, it's going to be a great, great show this year. Uh, the Summer Concert Series is beginning on July 11th, the first group that we have is, is Crush, which will be July 11th, July 18th will be Country Fresh, July 25th is Reflections, and then the Kids Show with Mr. Kurt will be on Thursday, August 1st. All the concert series are on a Thursday night, they're all at seven, and they're all over at the gazebo. I see that today, they did do the floor for the gazebo, so it's looking really nice over there. DPW is always, does a great job fixing it up and sprucing up the park, so they did also take care of, uh, or looking to take care of the trees that we spoke about.
The what, I'm sorry?
The trees in the, uh...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The gazebo area, so that's being addressed.
Okay, great.
But they, they're doing a fabulous job of getting everything all set. Uh, so that is my pool, that is swim, um, the stage for Clarkstown, that we're looking to purchase from Clarkstown, I went on the bidding site today, I just got a, I just got a free moment this evening to do that. Michael, I sent you an email, I just have to check some things with Michael to be able to proceed with that, but...
Okay.
We're still hoping for that, I think, again, that would be a phenomenal, um, purchase for the Village to be able to help us out in a lot of different events. And that is it for me.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the registration and getting through this whole process. We're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
I have a question, actually, about the bidding. So, for that, so is there a particular top bid, so to speak, so that, you know?
To be honest, Steve, I don't know. I haven't done a bid before, so I just got myself logged into it today. And they're asking for some information for me to go forward, so as soon as I do know more, I'll be able to tell you. But I really don't know how the, I don't know if it's like an open or a start number, I really don't know that yet. I'm learning this as I go. So, if Mike and I connect tomorrow and I have the information, I can share it with the board, but I really don't.
But we are limited on, what was the authorized amount from the board? Up to?
Up to 75, I believe.
75?
Right.
And we don't know if there's a reserve on it. I believe that's what you're probably indicating, Steve, if there was a reserve on it. I don't know. If you find out, let us know.
I will, as soon as, again, I just did it this evening, so I will make sure I update everybody on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Police Department. Chief Osborne.
Mayor and Board, just briefly, we have two things I'm going to present to the board tonight to vote on. We spoke about at the workshop. The first will be, we're looking for the board to accept a donation of $605 to the Suffolk Dare Program from Steve's Lawns. And I think I explained at the workshop, Steve's Lawn, the owner of Steve's Lawn, had found $605 in a memorial drive area back in 2017. Tenmore Station turned it in, we inter-treated his lost property, found property, held onto it, followed all the rules, all the regulations, still regulation, spoke to Mike about it. We then, we've been doing a store haul, all of our evidence, this big evidence purge we've been doing for a year now. It's on pretty much a full-time basis. Right now, we just got to get everything up to where it needs to be for state accreditation. To make a long story short, we contacted donor Steve's Lawns to come and get the money, said you can have it, you know, you passed the timeframe. And he contacted us and said he would like to donate, he basically said, "We do a lot for the kids here in the village," and he'd like to donate the money to the Suffolk Dare Program. I haven't written, I gave Amy the paperwork for the last meeting, so we're just asking the board to accept the donation of the $605.
Okay, so I have the resolution in front of me, accepting a donation from Steve's Lawn, Inc., for the Dare Program in the amount of $605. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do you have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. I think we got it, we got it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Secondly, I spoke to the board at the workshop as well, looking for permission for the board to send Detective Van Colly to Dallas, Texas to re-crimes against children's conference in Texas from August 12th to August 15th, no cost to the village, and is going to pay for everything on her own and be reimbursed by the county, disadvantaged by the District Attorney's Office. And we've been asked several times to go to this, I believe there's four or five places, I should say, openings from Rockland County, and obviously, we would like to participate in this, because unfortunately, like any municipality and jurisdiction, we do get assaults, crimes against children, and it supplies us training for no cost to our department. She is our youth officer who handles these, the warning many cost of manpower because she's a detective, off the road working investigation, there's really literally no cost at all for it.
Okay, so I have the resolution authorizing Detective Colly to attend the Crimes Against Children's Conference in Dallas, Texas, August 12th through August 15th, at no cost to the village. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hertzmann, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you, Mayor and Board. Just a quick update, we had 667 police letters and calls for the month of June this past month. And one thing I just want to make the board aware of, I am on a committee here in the county, there's a criminal justice reform committee. In case you're not aware, there's going to be, basically sweeping legislation has been passed by the state for criminal justice and bail reform. It's very different than what we have now. It is a lot of information to digest, to get in place for January 1st. I was in a meeting with the district attorneys, chief of detectives, and some other representatives from police departments in the county chiefs, captains, and lieutenants this morning to go over the legislation. And basically, it changes the way we're going to have to process our arrests, the way we handle bail with the courts. We do expect, obviously, to go through some growing pains with it in all state, particularly the county, because there is a lot, basically, a state unfunded mandate that costs welcome back to the municipalities statewide to basically put these procedures in place. And they're pretty sleepy after going through the legislation in this committee. So, if anybody has any questions, please feel free to contact me. I'd be more than willing to sit down and go over what we need to do as a department.
I just want to chime in, as I'd mentioned at the workshop, but I just want to get it on the record since this is videotaped. As you might recall, at a previous workshop, I had requested the chief to provide additional information to the public, specifically how much overtime was spent in the prior month, how many hours and so forth, and how many felonies. There seems to be some resistance against that, and the mayor had a response, and I just wanted to get that on the record, that's all.
Okay, there is no, there's no response, but these are details that we can obtain and disclose, absolutely. So, we can have that discussion afterwards or before the meeting.
I mean, I feel it should be at a public meeting, it should be, these numbers should be provided to the public.
Okay, I'll have that discussion, I'll further that discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, you got it, thank you.
Department of Public Works, let's see, so Mr. Zawicki is out on vacation. Is Joe going to speak to these points? Are you briefed on it, Joe, or no?
Yeah.
All right, let's try to work through this. Joe, would you mind helping us out here? Joe Hunt. So, I have the resolution authorizing Charles Zawicki to publicly advertise for bid solicitations for roadway improvements, number, Phase 10 project. So, as discussed, we had the Phase 10 project, the number of roads that it would incorporate.
The Phase 10 project, we were waiting on input from Mike for bonding and a meeting with O&R to make sure we're not paving anything that we're going to have dig up. So, we have that meeting, I think, the 8th or the 10th with O&R.
Mr. Janito was briefed on it also.
The main issue with the Phase 10 of the roadway project was how much was available in leftover state aid from CHIPS, unused state aid from this year and last year, CHIPS and what's known as the Paved New York Program. In any event, I met with Danielle Curtin, who's the secretary to the department or administrative assistant there, this morning to go over the submissions of the CHIPS funds previously and so forth. So, and what we had discussed on all of these projects that are coming up before you in these resolutions is how we would finance them and what the amount of money would be needed. So, before we actually adopt the resolution, now going out to bid is what we want to have adopted tonight. At the next meeting, we should have the bid amounts in, which will give me enough time to contact our bond counsel, determine the financing, and whatever bond financing we need to go to the bond counsel and have him develop the bond resolutions that are necessary to go along with the projects. This is a quick note, the Phase 10 project is predominantly the CHIPS money and bonding for any balance that's not available from CHIPS state aid. The Wayne Avenue and Sidewalk Project, as you know, there's a small amount of CHIPS money that's already been dedicated to that, approximately $28,000. There's also a grant that we've been awarded for that project, and if there was any additional funding needed, most likely that would be coming from debt as well. And so, those are the two projects. Now, and the curb replacement project would be the same thing. Is that part of the Phase 10?
Yes.
It is?
It is.
So, it'll be within the same project of the Phase 10, again, with the bonding and the CHIPS money?
Okay. And also, Mayor, we were, the share cost, he was going to assist on some of that road paving from O&R. We might have to do amendment or some kind of add-on.
Into the, on the Phase 10 roadways?
Excuse me?
On the Phase 10 portion of the road?
We were going to incorporate some of the roads that are going to blend into where they've already dug, and we're working right now to do square footage and get their side. Hopefully, on our meeting, we'll know what they're going to give us to do the share cost, so.
Cost sharing.
This was kind of a little premature for me, because we needed more info and more time.
Okay. All right, but for now, we're just going to go out to bid for the bids. So, I have the resolution authorizing Charles Zawicki to publicly advertise for bid solicitations for roadway improvement, Phase 10. Ralph, did you review the bids or do we need to get them reviewed?
I reviewed and I made the one change that I was, yes.
All right, so do I have a motion for the Phase 10 publicly advertised for bid?
Motion.
Trustee Hagan?
Second.
And Trustee Girard, any further discussion?
I note you said Charles is away on vacation. When do these bids have to go out to be due, on July 25th?
I believe, I believe that from discussions I had with Charles, when I was making the one revision I made, he indicated that he was working to have those packets ready before he left and he was just waiting for the.
They are ready, Danielle will be shipping them once you guys get the authorization to do it.
Danielle sent them out?
She didn't send them out, she will as soon as you say yes.
As soon as we say yes.
Any further? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, resolution authorizing Charles Zawicki to publicly advertise for bid solicitations for the curb replacement project. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Same circumstances. All in favor?
Aye.
Authorizing, motion, resolution authorizing Charles Zawicki to publicly advertise bid solicitations for the Wayne Avenue Sidewalk Project. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Maybe you want to refresh the board on that, Mike, with the allocations of money and the grant, maybe Fred also, the available funds?
I'll tell you, $28,000 approximately is from CHIPS and Fred, the grants?
Approximately $280,000 from grant funds. So, the total estimated cost of the project is 320. So, the shortfall between the 280.
12 grand.
12 grand would be, need to be bonded or paid out of.
Right, okay.
And we have a 10% requirement on that, right? So, that satisfies that?
Right, correct.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution authorizing payment number three to Tilcon, New York, for Phase 9 roadway improvements. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? This is the final payment, as indicated. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I have a resolution appointing Christopher Hartfield Jr. as laborer effective July 8th at a pay rate of 17, effective July 8th at a pay rate of 1730 per hour. Do I have a motion? Trustee Hertzmann, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Next up, Mr. Janito, Village Treasurer.
Mayor, the first resolution before you is related to that final payment that you just approved. Once that final payment is made, the project is, came in under budget, and so this resolution is actually requesting that we reduce the budget for that project down to what was actually spent.
Okay, so I have the resolution, resolution amending capital projects 2019, 002, 2019 roadway improvements. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor, the next resolution, generally accepted accounting principles require us to have an actuary, perform an actuarial evaluation of our other post-employment benefits, which is essentially benefits provided to retirees for health care predominantly in retirement. We have, we had a contract with Aquarius Capital of Portchester, New York, and at that time, we did go out to several firms. They came in well under the pricing of the other firms, and they are just as qualified as any other firm to perform the actuarial analysis. And we did it for a five-year term back then, and we're asking for another five-year term for them to perform an actuarial evaluation on the audit.
So, I have the authorizing, resolution authorizing the awarding of a contract to Aquarius Capital of Portchester, New York for fiscal year ending May 31, 2019 through 2024.
Yeah, and Mayor, I would say that's subject to a form approved by the village attorney.
Subject to what?
A form approved by the village attorney.
A form approved by the village attorney.
That's fine.
That's fine. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
The next resolution is essentially an annual housekeeping resolution that we do where, when it comes at year end, there are so many minor budgetary adjustments that are made throughout the different funds, that we authorize the treasurer to go ahead and make those adjustments and then make a report at the end of the audit as to what adjustments were actually made.
So, I have the resolution authorizing the village treasurer to make necessary fiscal year-end budget amendments. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Alpert, second?
Second.
Trustee Girard, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next resolution is declaring various computer equipment as surplus. As we always advise the board, any hard drives or any kind of recording devices that are in those computers are removed and either repurposed for village purposes or destroyed.
I have the resolution to declare certain computer equipment as surplus. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hagan, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Girard, all, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
So, all these items are going to be on that GOV, GOV bid or whatever it's called?
Yes, we will place those items on GOV deal for auction and get the best possible The other, the last resolution is establishing a capital project for our 2020 police vehicles in the budget. It was, that was adopted, the 2020 budget. We adopted a project to purchase two police vehicles, one marked and one unmarked, and to finance them through an installment purchase contract, essentially, most people would call a capital lease. This resolution establishes the project and establishes the financing of those vehicles through an installment purchase contract.
Okay, I have the resolution authorizing the purchase of two police vehicles. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hertzmann, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any further discussion?
Do these replace previous vehicles? And are those vehicles that are being replaced, being?
Yes, we're taking two of the oldest from Poverty, 2006. We're taking two of the oldest from Poverty, 2006. We have the 2007, we have a fleet of Ford, so they're the only ones. And they will be putting to surplus or if they're DM5, which I think they are basically. We gotta replace two of them, we'll be taking two of those.
Okay, that's what I wanted to understand, thank you.
Any further? All in, all in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. This time I would like to open the forum up to audience participation. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak? Come on up and state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Roseanne Lucanera, Two Forests Drive, Suffolk, New York. Three years ago, my curbs were taken out by the snowplows. I called, they said they would come and fix them. Nothing's been done. Two years ago, a tree was taken down by the town because it was going over the utility lines. They said they were gonna grind the stump. Still nothing, okay? Last snowstorm, my front step was taken down by a snowplow, moved over six inches, totally removed. Yes, it's close to the road, I know that. Once again, thank God to Joe Hunt who came over, had somebody come over and at least stabilize it because someone was gonna fall walking up my step, okay? I was told all of these things would be fixed, including the craters on Hillcrest, not holes. And Paul, you know, you've seen it. Mr. Mayor, you should see it too, it's in our neighborhood. They're not holes, they're craters. I have fallen into one of those craters, walking my dog. I can't walk my dog on that road. That's ridiculous. There's a pothole on the base of my driveway. I have called the town numerous times, spoken to numerous people. I got one call back from Joe who came and helped me with the step. That was it. I was told everything was gonna be fixed. This was three years going on. As a taxpayer, I think I deserve more than this. And so do the people that live on Hillcrest. Woodland, I have pictures on my phone. Joe sent somebody out to do a quick repair. It's all mess again. So now they have to come back out. So what did we do? We did a quick fix. We were wasting more money and time with manpower because now they have to come out again. When are these issues going to be fixed? I would be happy to show you my pictures.
Thank you, Roseanne. I can speak to the items on Hillcrest because I did speak to Charles and Danielle Friday. And I put in, I requested a work order. I identified where those, I think there were four very large potholes on Hillcrest.
They're not even potholes, they're craters.
Yes, and that's why I pointed him out because.
I fell in one of them. And you know, if I got hurt, wouldn't be a good thing.
Yeah. So I know I can at least speak to that issue because I just spoke to him about it.
And when are they gonna be fixed?
Well, we are battling, we are, we will address your concerns immediately, but we have been battling potholes and road resurfacing and repairs over the course of the year. Every, every year. I mean, and in regards to, and I'm not making excuses, but rain and other areas that are in need, it's, I hear you loud and clear, we'll get on it.
But when? That's what I wanna know. I'm tired of making calls and told, yes, your stump will be grinded. That was two years ago.
Where is the tree? I'm sorry.
Right up in my front lawn. You know where I live on Forest? Right on the corner of Forest and Woodland? They took the tree down, the stump is still there. First of all, stumps can attract termites. I can't afford to have termites.
Isn't it a large stump?
Yes, huge. They said, yeah, we're gonna grind it. Okay, that was two years ago. Three years ago was the curbs and the water comes down my hill, floods out the front of my lawn.
The curbs, are you talking about the berms?
Yes, the berms.
Okay, the berms, that's what I was confused.
I call them curbs, yes. I don't understand. And I'm told, you'll get a call back, they're coming out. Oh yeah, we ordered, we ordered materials, we're coming out to take care of the potholes. I'm yes to death for three years. What if I didn't pay my taxes in three years? I wouldn't be living in Suffolk. Right? Okay, so why am I not getting anyone to come out to do these things?
I'll look into it for you.
I also sent a letter to you.
I know, I forwarded that letter up to, to the DPW.
And once again, no response. So it's just, I'm very disgusted. If you would love, I would love to show you the pictures if you're here to see them.
Sure, sure, if you don't mind.
To the right.
Just so you can see the size next to a ship.
Yeah, another pick. There's a lot of roads that look like this too.
And Hillcrest is on the list to be paved as well, but yes, I saw the potholes and I said, you know, obviously we have to do that.
They're like really bad. I don't want anybody to get hurt. Someone's gonna get hurt. People that walk with children, with dogs in our neighborhood, and I would hate to see So now we can't walk down this thing anymore.
Mayor, is there some way we could set up maybe some sort of web portal where residents could report potholes? And that way, not only report them, but have a status that says, okay, this has been attended to or this, we can look into it?
I don't know if that can be done, but I'm.
I hate bothering the.
Because I suspect that some of this is things that, I could be wrong, but I suspect that some of this is things that have fallen through the, alleged, bad pun here, fallen through the cracks, you know? But I don't know. I mean, again, I know that, I know that the information's being forwarded to the DPW, the mayor forwarded your letter, but I understand. Obviously, I can't speak for three years ago myself.
Okay, give us, let us, let me, yeah, okay. Mr. Hunt, can we evaluate the situation up there? I know that we spoke about it numerous times. What's that?
On behalf of Hillcrest Road, the base is so badly disturbed that no matter how many tons of blacktop, and over the three years, we put over 20 tons from her road, Forest, to Ave B, to Corner, to Sunset, Somerset, whatever it is up there. And it just doesn't hold, no matter what we do.
Were we thinking about incorporating that road into Phase 10?
That is in there.
That road is, is it definite, definitively in Phase 10?
Yes, it is.
It is, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Hey Joe, Joe, I'm sorry. The estimates that we have for all these streets, does that include reconstructing berms, berms on all these roads?
Everything gets bermed, if it has berms, if it doesn't have curbs, there'll be berms put in.
Thank you.
That's something we should really look at.
And the reason why you save money on that last phase project is DPW did all the manhole and drains.
Right.
So the contractor didn't have to do it. To save the village money.
Good job, CSEA.
Speaking of the berms and whatnot, I just had a question to add to that, Joe.
Joe, you're not done.
So.
Trustee Alpert has a question for you.
I'd heard, I'd heard, I'd heard from a resident that lives in the sort of cul-de-sac at the end of, at the end of Hillcrest and.
The dead end of Hillcrest?
The dead end. And they said that because the berms were disturbed or damaged or whatever, they say by plows, I don't know if that's the case, that's what they're claiming, that now they get a lot of water runoff that comes down into their driveway and into their garage and everything else. So I presume that whatever repairs are done as part of this Phase 10 will correct that sort of water runoff issue?
Two things about berms. Berms are put there to help flow water at a medium level. When it's a monsoon, you're not gonna control it. And also to give us a guiding mark so we don't go into people's yards, alright? But they are a weak item, they're meant to be broken.
I see.
So you're not damaging Belgium block and curbs.
Right.
For us to go out and do a temporary berm, it's temporary. A car backing over it can push it off because it's not gonna cure a ease to the old blacktop. So we try to do the best we can. We had a berm machine and just look at a part of hillside to Cypress. It sat on there for a little while and you touch it, it pushes off. So we're hoping in the future, we are gonna pave more roads and put more berms or curbs in to help the flow of water.
Joe, tomorrow, if you don't mind, go up to Hillcrest and investigate the three complaints, the berms, the potholes, the grinding.
And it's Forest.
Forest, excuse me.
The Forest, I think Charles and Billy and Farmer were looking into the right-of-way 10-foot issue with their stairway.
Right.
That was so close to the road.
Alright.
The berms again.
Okay, go, just do me a favor, go up there and evaluate the situation.
I got pictures. Like she says, I've been there.
Yeah, I know, I hear ya. And generate a work order for it.
I don't think I'm allowed to generate work orders if you.
It's coming from me, so I can generate the work order to you, to Danielle, inform Danielle to generate the work order and get it done.
If you want me to generate, sir, I will.
Thank you very much, Joe, thank you.
And thank you.
You're welcome, I'm sorry about all of that.
Good morning, uh, good afternoon, I was close. Bob Morris, 24 Terrace Avenue, Suffolk. I dropped off some papers and I'm wondering if we had any discussions on the ward system for Suffolk.
We had lengthy discussions about the ward system, the board at the workshop and the board's feeling, I don't know if the board individually wants to express their feelings, but I don't see it being a suitable fit for the villages of Suffolk. Out of all of the villages in New York State, there is one village in New York State that implemented a ward system. There are a limited number of towns that implement the ward system. I don't think we have the population to, to implement it. I think you're disenfranchising the voters on representation. There's just so many different variables that the board seemed to agree about, agree on.
Alright, well, let me clarify some things then. Number one, Suffolk had a ward system prior to at-large voting.
What year was that?
I moved up here in 68, so 67, I believe they, 67, 68, they went to at-large voting and they moved the elections off from, it used to be in March, and they put them to coincide with the general elections. One of the purposes, and majority of the board was with me, I was part of it, when we all went and supported Ramapo in the fight for the ward system. True, we're not as big as the town of Ramapo, but we say face the same issues, or we will at some point face the same issues that the town of Ramapo did. So there is a legitimate reason and rationale to go to a ward system. There may be some apprehension on the part of the board, but it doesn't cost the village anything to do this, absolutely nothing.
It would actually cost the village something.
No.
Yes, because you have to, you have to, you have to do a census, you have to do the, the evaluation and analysis of the census every.
We don't do the census.
Every 10 years.
The Board of Elections. In other words, once this board says, yes, go ahead, it doesn't mean that the ward system is instituted. All it's simply meaning is that we can put a proposition on the ballot and let the voters of Suffolk decide whether or not they want a ward system. If the ward system is approved by the voters, it costs the village nothing. At that point, it goes over to the Board of Elections. The Board of Elections is responsible for drawing up the boundaries, which would, I think their only criteria is an equal representation in the election districts. We're now looking to, in some instances where they've had ward systems, they've increased the town council from four to six. That's not necessary for us, four is inadequate representation for this size town. So there is no cost to us. The proposition is put on the ballot by the Board of Elections. We're not paying for the elections, we're not paying for the proposition. If the voters of Suffolk want it, it, again, can be decided very simply by their response at the ballot. And I think that's probably the most honest and fair way to handle this issue. We were all for it before. What prompted a change now? I don't know. But again, I think the overwhelming turnout, and he was raw with me when we did the Ramapo Ward, the overwhelming support in Suffolk, the turnout was absolutely huge in favor of the ward system. And there's no reason, conversations that I have with people, there's no reason to believe that any of that changed. And again, it does prevent us getting sucked into a position of being at the mercy of block voting.
Being at the mercy of who?
Of the block voting.
Oh.
At some point, it will happen to us. So maybe is one to consider, again, I understand you may be reluctant, but I think maybe it's something that should go to the voters.
Okay, alright, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Fred Rela.
Hello Fred.
Fourth of July is one of my favorite weeks of the year. You know, it's when we get to celebrate, have a barbecue with friends and family, hopefully nice weather, swimming, parades, but also fireworks. And I noticed that, like in front of Acme, there's a big fireworks, where you can buy fireworks, I can buy them in the grocery store. I was just up at Walmart, I could buy them. What are the rules now, the law? It used to be that you can't set off fireworks or purchase them, but I guess you can buy them now? And I guess a lot of people are gonna be setting them off, I was just wondering.
Sure, please.
I just wanna add, this, this one right in front of Ace as well, I just wanted to add.
Okay, just all I did gather, I actually put a, Fred, I was running through the same thing, it's funny because one of my neighbors asked me. So what I did is I got the county law today, Tewoclin County Law, New York State passed a law, I guess for certain, certain counties that could have this, these fireworks, they're not, not all fireworks are legal. You can't have the thing blowing up, a bomb shoot up in the air. It's for ground displays, things that are shooting at colors but not explosions. If you look at our Facebook page on Suffolk Police, I put the law and explanation on there. It's on the Village of Suffolk page about four hours ago, and it's not all about Suffolk thing. Suffolk is probably easier just to read it Fred, because I agree with you, people think everything's legal. This place that's selling them over at Ace, those are legal, you can set those off the problem. But if you're gonna, if somebody people think Fred, that everything's legal, and that is definitely an issue, they're out there blowing your motors up in the air thinking it's legal because of seeing them sold. So it's very limited what's legal, most of them are not legal. So I would suggest, and I may even send out, on a, especially on a bed, I did maybe a Nixal alert, we have about 1,900 people in the village residence that we've gained, we've built upon a system we run, and maybe just to send a link to that law.
That's a good idea.
You know, I.
Can you do that?
Yeah. Because it just, Fred, so many people confuse, I hear it every day.
Right.
And my neighbor asked me, and that's what made me, prompted me to put it up there today.
Great, thank you.
Chief, it's in our permit also, we have the issue of permit for sale. Nothing that is six feet off the ground or less, nothing that explodes, nothing, we are not allowed to sell, so there's no explosive devices. Each, there was called sparkling devices.
Yes, thank you, thank you Joe.
Nothing that explodes, nothing that was six feet higher off the ground, so fat on the state.
Absolutely.
All sparkling devices now, for all sparkers.
Right.
You say I have to be a little, you know, because they, they are smaller than, it's actually the same law.
Yes.
The little family, it's the same.
I checked, I want to thank you, when it first opened up, I stopped in to check that, and thank you for that.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
So that's a good one.
I think Bruce is coming up, um.
I just, I would like to ask if the board by the next meeting can have a vote on whether or not they want to go ahead with the ward system or they want to turn it down?
We'll have that further discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Morris, I just wanna add one thing, isn't it possible also for you to, you know, get a petition and get something on the ballot on your own accord?
Yes, there is a petition, but the board would have to be against it, if I interpreted the law correctly. And in that case, then it would have to be individual petitions by X percentage of voters in order to get it onto the thing. It's just, it's a much easier process.
Right.
Again, if the board.
I know Mr. Gerard was supposed to reach out, did you reach out to him or no?
We did speak before the meeting.
You did, before the meeting. Let's speak, why don't you and I speak also?
Can I get my brush back?
It's in the shed.
Okay.
I mean, just, just to add one thing, I mean, I suspect, and I could be wrong, but I, I think, I think the resistance, that was when we were at the workshop discussing this, because we did spend quite a bit of time discussing this. It wasn't just a, oh, what's, what about this? You know, we actually talked about it for quite a while. I think the overall feeling was that we don't have the sort of problem in Suffolk that Ramapo had and still has. So I think, you know, I guess in your thoughts, perhaps Suffolk needs this. I, I don't see the need, at least not at the moment.[1747.16]
Well, again, we don't see the need, and there's such a thing as being proactive instead of reactive. Reactive makes us wind up in court fighting a lawsuit. Proactive eliminates that issue entirely. And again, it's an innocuous law, what's the difference? I mean, the number of people running, I mean, basically, if I took a representation of everybody here, you're all from different areas.
Just coincidentally, but there's been other times where two members of the board were next-door neighbors, when Charles Falsigley was on the board.
Well, that's absolutely possible, but that would preclude that, and everybody in the village would have an equal representation.
Right. But as you, just, I mean, I'm not trying to argue with you at all.
No, no.
I'm just trying to take devil's advocate here, but in many instances, it's tough to even find candidates, let alone candidates from different-
I've never seen that problem, truthfully.
I'll give you an example, and with all due respect to the mayor, the mayor has run unopposed, this will be his second election.
That's because he's doing such a fine job.
Well, that could be, but it, but my point is, there's a lot, there's not a lot of people that are interested in running, and I'm not meaning any disrespect to the mayor. There's not a lot of people who are interested in running anywhere in the village, let alone in covering all the different potential four districts.
I mean, that's a piece of the concern. I mean, there's many, many concerns. I spoke to like, I would say roughly five attorneys in regards to it.
Yeah, I-
And each attorney even, each attorney was like, there is no need for it, you don't, it just doesn't work.
Well, again, you're right.
You're disenfranchising certain people within the village, as Paul, Steve was indicating, within each ward, if you had a selected candidate that you really wanted to support and represent, but he wasn't in your ward, you're not going to be able to support him.
Well, it's the same, it's the same system that Congress uses.
But that's a whole different scenario, Bob. There's thousands, tens of thousands of people.
Congress is using a ward system, and a large ward system, but it is a ward system.
There's pros and cons to ward system.
Absolutely. What I'm simply saying is, you know, I probably would go the petition route, but I would like to get a vote, a board vote on whether, where you stand with this. And naturally, again, it's much easier if we can simply say, okay, hey, listen, throw it on the thing, let the voters of Suffolk figure out right or wrong, and, you know, based on our representation at the Ramapo Ward issue, Suffolk residents overwhelmingly in favor of this. Give it a thought.
Thank you.
Good evening again, board. I'm still Bruce Simon from 31 Utopian Avenue, in case anybody was wondering. I know at the workshop last week, there was discussion about the Battery Saturday that the Community Foundation wants to have. And since I couldn't be there last week, I wanted to know, did anybody have any questions? Did anybody need any more information? I don't see it on the agenda tonight, but I figured since I'm here, I can answer any concerns or questions you might have.
Are we only doing batteries?
Yeah.
That was like the main question, I believe.
Originally, it had started out just as batteries. The reason for that, it had expanded over the years, the previous times we'd done it. It has been a few years, so my thought originally was, let's start small, let's start with one item, successfully complete that, and then expand it. I've spoken to a number of people around the village, one of whom is sitting here, hello, Joe, oh, he's hiding now, who suggested that if we're going to do this, we should go all in. So we would be doing batteries, paint, small appliances, and any other things that should not go into the waste stream, but should go up to Pomona.
That's what I would recommend.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
A question about this. So batteries, let's talk about that for a second. Regular household batteries, like double As, nine volts, those sort of things, typically on the packaging, it does not, there is like, there's no recycling capability on those things. So what happens to them?
It's not recycling. What they do is they, up at Pomona, they take them and they're processed, or they send them someplace to be processed. If you put batteries into the landfill, if you put them in your garbage bags and just put them out every week with your regular trash, the acids in the batteries will leach in and seep into groundwater. So the whole goal of this originally was to just divert that. It started as Battery Saturday. I have to give credit to Jack Meehan, former trustee, Jack Meehan. He is, as far as I know, the one who got this started. When we had a recycling committee here in the village, when I was on it, we continued that, and that's when we were expanding it. It's been a few years, we haven't done it. The foundation has decided to take on that mantle.
Sounds good. I mean, there's no downside to it. I don't see a downside to it.
So you would really determine if it was going to be batteries, computers, what else?
The last time we did it, the biggest one we did, it was batteries, televisions, computers, light bulbs, CFL light bulbs, the kind of curly twisty ones, the ones that preceded LEDs.
Right.
And fluorescent light bulbs. These bulbs should not go into the garbage for the chemical reasons. People brought old computers, they brought televisions, they brought toasters, microwaves. Nobody brought, thankfully, nobody showed up with a refrigerator or an oven. And Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think anybody brought tires that day, although I'm not opposed to that, you know, if that's the way we want to go. But it really was diverting all the stuff that we shouldn't be putting into the trash, that for any number of reasons, everybody says, oh, God, I'm not driving up to Pomona just for this double A battery. And then they just toss it. And we're just trying to avoid that. The goal of doing it on Saturday, November 2nd, that's the weekend that the clocks change. Everybody should be changing their batteries and their smoke detectors and their carbon monoxide detectors. Since they're pulling the batteries anyway, let's give them an easy way for them to dispose of them. And if we can get this done, and I hope the board sees fit to do that, we would do it twice a year. In the spring, when the clocks change, and then in the fall, when they change back again. And it's just a service for the village, for the community.
Good. Sounds good.
And Joe, is there any concern if we expand this, that, I know we were going to utilize a village truck. I mean, is it a strain on the resources we were looking?
You're talking to me?
Yeah, I apologize. Yeah, I just, if we do expand it this way-
Yes, Mr. De Niro, they're talking to you.
Now, what was your question, sir?
If we expand the program as Bruce describes to these, all these other items, I know that we were going to utilize a village truck on that, I think there was a weekend that, that date was, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, Bruce forgot to let you know that CSCA was a big part of volunteering their time, packing the stuff so the truck could go right to the county for disposal. This program, once it stopped, it kind of hurt us because we started finding stuff at the DPW when the gates were left open. Many, many, many paint cans, TVs, computers. Mike wasn't down there to take them apart and get the goods out of them, but we were able to process them. There is a process. I will make contact with Jeremy, prepare him so the date that once we're packed, the next morning, workable morning, we'll bring them to the county for disposal and have our track record. One of the reasons why you want to get rid of stuff this way is so that we show that we are part of the recycle team of not just our bottles and garbage, but everything that can hurt our apartment.
All right, sounds good.
And I got a pretty big folder.
So we would be able to handle that?
Yes, I think I already have five people aboard that are-
That will volunteer.
Rotating to volunteer.
Okay.
It's kind of like what we do with Keep Rockland Beautiful.
Yeah, okay. So let's develop the plan, comprehensive plan, and we'll put it together, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will develop that plan, absolutely. And I apologize, I was remiss. We could not do it without the volunteers from the CSCA.
That's right.
Just, I had a brief email conversation with Charles Awicky a week or so ago. He supports it. He did not see a particular reason why two or three of the smaller trucks, as we've done in the past, would be here so that as the devices, as the items were brought in, they were literally put onto the truck right away. Again, so we don't have pallets sitting in the driveways. The reason to bring the trucks up is that at the end of the event, they're driven down to the street department. The parking lot is cleared once we're all done.
Right, perfect.
And you mentioned recycling. The quarterly recycling numbers came out today. And once again, the Village of Suffolk is the leading recycler in the county. Far and away, I don't know if we're doing a whole lot better or our amount fell off, but where it used to be a few dollars separating, there's about $1,200 difference this time, just for the quarter.
Right.
We think it was about $6,700.
Through the education and outreach that Joe and the DPW do.
Do you need more recycling at the pool?
More recycling at the pool, there you go. Perfect. Thank you.
All right, so-
Thank you.
I know there's no workshop in July for the August meeting. If any of you have any questions, you know how to find me. You have my email, you have my phone number. I'm glad, I'm happy to fill anybody in so that hopefully in August, we can have a vote and we can, I can move forward.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public? It's Carol. Hi, Carol.
Hello.
Hello.
I didn't see anything on the agenda, and I wondered what's happening with Lake Road past the pool before Montebello, where it's been caving in and you had it closed. Have we made any progress?
We're still doing the investigations on that and seeking a remedy. There's nothing on the agenda, you're right.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah. That's a major project.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Trustees. Mr. Albert. Mr. Gerard?
No, everything I had is in the workshop and the agenda, so it's fine.
Great, thank you. Mr. Hertzman?
Mister?
Miss, Miss Hertzman?
Did I say mister?
Ms.?
I think you were starting.
I was starting to say.
No, I'm sorry.
No, I have.
Okay. Mr. Magrino, if you could give us the update on the resolution for the Halid Place Agreement with Rockland County? I know it's under my section.
Yes, just briefly, I hope you don't mind, I took off my jacket, it's a little hot. Right, for several years, the county and the village have had an agreement whereby the county can park, I'm sorry, not park, use Halid Place lot for bus, commuter bus operations. So the agreement expired, this is a new agreement, the Rockland County Legislature passed it. Difference between this one and the last one, this is a two-year agreement from January 1 of 19 through December 31 of 20, and it's an additional $100 a month. So it's a total of $19,200 per year. And plus, they've agreed to an additional $10,000 for capital improvements as we see fit. So they've agreed, the county's agreed to it, the county legislatures agreed to it, the board's okay with it. I'd ask for a vote on it, I prepared the resolution.
Okay, so I have the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a license agreement with the county of Rockland for parking at Halid Place. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any further discussion? This enables the first company to use the Halid Place in exchange for $1,600 a month and an additional $10,000 in capital improvements to the lot, just for the public to know. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Next, I have the resolution establishing three positions of the refreshment stand attendant one. Board of Trustees establishes three positions of refreshment stand attendant one, as summer positions in the Rec Department effective June 28, 2019, non-protunk. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hertzman, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Next, I have a resolution appointing three refreshment stand attendants for the Suffolk Memorial Pool Summer 2019 Program. Resigned, the Village of Suffolk Board of Trustees appoints Emily Burns, Rachel Leejoy, Kevin Janito as refreshment stand attendant one in the Recreation Department for the Suffolk Memorial Pool, effective June 28, 2019, non-protunk, at a pay rate of $10 per hour. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hertzman, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any discussion?
Oh, yeah, just a point here. I did go up to the pool on Saturday for the opening, and I have to say that the job that the two young ladies that were working there really was outstanding. Really, you know, personally won me over. I'm going to vote yes to this, but I do want to say that we have to make sure that we post positions in a timely manner so that if anybody's, you know, interested in applying for the role, that we have, they have a fair shake at.
Okay, any further? So I'm one of all those in attendance tonight to know that the Suffolk Snack Shack that we opened up came to be a result of two college students, Rachel Leejoy and Emily Burns. The girls approached me with their idea to having a fun village of Suffolk and us to manage the concession stand. They reached out to me. It was, they understand that the concession was going out, going out to be an outside vendor. They presented this idea only as an alternative for next year. Unfortunately, we did put the concession stand out to bid, we received no bids, so the idea really sprung in and is a great asset to the pool, and is going to really make the experience at the pool something good for the children there. So it's great that they're on board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you.
I have a quick question about the pool concessions.
Yes, sir.
So obviously, it was very successful this weekend and whatnot. Is there sort of a rolling arrangement so as money comes in from the concessions, more concessions are purchased?
Yes, we have that all developed, we have that restocking, we have a, we have a whole system in place.
It's a procedure in place.
Kathy is managing it.
Perfect.
Appropriately in regards to restocking and scheduling, and just another added role to the Recreation Department. So thank you for doing that, Kathy. Mr. Janito?
Yeah, I just want to add to that, too, that we also have to collect sales tax, so we build it into the price, and it's called a gross-up method. So we are, we do have a sales tax for now that, and that's required, even though we're tax exempt for other things. These are items that could be sold by a private enterprise. And likewise, it's also one of the good things about it is, it's a learning experience for the people working there because they're going to be maintaining inventory, as well as taking in sales, understanding what cost of sales is all about, what profit, what sales tax is all about, et cetera. So it's not only good for the village, and I should say, too, we had very few options since no bids had come in, and that was like a last-minute thing. The only other option was to perhaps to put out a couple of vending machines, which probably would have been a little bit unsightly and certainly not festive. So it's a good alternative, I believe.
I think this is great.
Thank you, and thank you for your help, Mr. Janito. Anyone have anything else? Okay, motion to close?
Motion.
Trustee Hagan?
Second.
Trustee Gerard, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Everybody have a great July 4th. See you next month in August.